And Councilman Crum, would you follow with the Pledge of Allegiance? Will everyone please stand?
Lord, we coming before you this evening, oh God. Just wanna thank you, Lord, for another day. Lord, we thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. Continue to abide and live in West Memphis, Arkansas. Lord, we give you glory this evening, we give you honor, and we give you praise, oh God. Continue, oh God, encourage our mayor and this city council body, oh God. Lord, take care of his stomach this evening. Look on Mr. Money's stomach, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Saturate this place with your presence and healing, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this evening. We give you honor, and we give you praise, oh God, 'cause it's in your name that we live and move and have our being. And we thank you right now, oh God, for your love and kindness and your tender mercy, oh God. Keep us hooked up, Lord. Keep us connected, oh God, so we can solve the problems in West Memphis and continue to be winning. We give you glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise God.
Amen. Remain standing unless, uh, face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
You can be seated. Thank you.
I'm gonna call this meeting the owner. Uh, City Clerk, will you please call the role?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Cat. Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson. Councilor Mohammed.
Here.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
We got eight out of nine present that did talk to Councilman Cat. He was not going to be here. Uh, we had the first item of business, I bid openness to Avondale, RCB maintenance. Can I get a motion second to approve that?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Uh, can I get a motion second to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. O business, City Attorney?
O business, O one is an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-three zero four regarding charges for ambulance service operated by the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
City Attorney, I think we skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. O business, corrective action. That's, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Alright.
I don't have anything to say on the O business, I don't think, Mayor.
It's a corrective action on permission for Mayor McClendon to purchase a vehicle command center from LDB Custom Specialty Vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Now, uh, Ms. Councilwoman Mohammed, will you, uh, give me the honor of doing both of these motions and the two as well?
Thank you so much. Have we added O two to the agenda already?
No, we need to add them. Add that O two and the, uh, the charity given.
Alright. I'd like to make a motion that O one be read by title only. Can I also make a motion that we add O two?
Oh, let me, can I get a second on?
After we get the first done.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's right, I'm tired on it. And now.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we add O two to the agenda, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it be read by title only.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passing now. Add the charity days.
I'd like to make a motion that the charity days be added to the agenda.
Take a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's add. Alright. Now, City Attorney?
Now, O one is an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-three zero four regarding charges for ambulance service operated by the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the first time, can I suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. City Attorney?
Second reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-three zero four regarding charges for ambulance service operated by the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
Uh, finally suspend those rules to place it on this last and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
This third reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-three zero four regarding charges for ambulance service operated by the West Memphis Fire Department and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the third and final time, uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Could we have Chief come on?
Chief Braxton, we've come over.
Yes, Chief.
Oh, that's, that's the chief. That's the big chief, I think.
Good evening, Lord.
Good evening. As you all know, West Memphis Fire Department is always looking for ways to bring money into the general fund without being a burden on the taxpayers. Uh, they've passed a new act, Act eight sixty-seven that allows us and some of our partners that are, have ambulance services to raise whortons. Uh, Chief Braxton has done a great job. He's really, uh, did a lot of research on this, and I'm gonna let him explain to you how we can bring more money into the general fund just by raising our floor on what our ambulance service, uh, uh, asks for when they go out. Uh, Chief Braxton, will you let him explain?
Yeah, so I've been looking at the, uh, reimbursement rates for, um, several years now, but uh, good news is this year Arkansas passed a new law, and this new law really affects commercial insurance. And we bill about thirty-nine percent of commercial insurance. So what the, this new law is, it sets a, a reimbursement rate for what the insurer, um, pays the ground ambulance, a set fee. There's no confusion to, is to eliminate confusion, but it's also to help raise the reimbursement rates, 'cause reimbursement rates have really been pretty low across the nation. It's really put a bu- burden on EMS as a whole. So what this, uh, new act is, so if you have a locally approved fee, then the private insurance will pay that local approved fee. But if you didn't have that local approved fee, then you would pay the, the lesser, the three twenty-five percent of the Medicare rule rate. So for ALS emergency like we do, that would be about sixteen hundred dollars. Well, our local approved rate don't even come close to that. It's set at five hundred dollars. I think it was passed in twenty-twelve, so it's been a, a long time. Plus a lot of itemized fees, like, they used to itemize, like, if they bill for four-by-four or IV, they got used. So these new rates are all inclusive. They're bundled together. So, um, I got with the Arkansas Ambulance Association. So they collect data, and the data they collected, um, basically showed that for a city our size, our rate should be higher than what they are. So, basically with that five hundred dollar, uh, base fee that we have now, we're leaving about one thousand one hundred dollars on the table. Uh, so that could be money that we generate into our general, general fund to help offset some of the operational costs of the fire department. So, uh, recommended rates that they recommended is what, um, they had, um, set for, for like, for ALS emergency would be about seventeen hundred dollars. So, uh, one of the biggest things I wanted to make clear too, it also prevents balance billing. That means what we collect from insurance, that means that's the payment in full, other than copays or deductible. So it won't affect anybody on Medicare or Medicaid. They have their set reimbursement rates, which are a lot lower. So this law is gonna help, you know, also take the burden off the taxpayer. So it shouldn't affect any citizen's pocket, other than, you know, what they paid in their copay, which is already agreed upon by their, their insurance company. So, last year, I took some data, um, and just kinda crunched some numbers, and I wanna say we made four thousand three hundred calls last year. So, say thirty-nine percent of that is about one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven calls. Well, times, you know, that ALS rate, we would be almost be, should have brought in two, two million dollars, eight hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars. So that's significantly more than what we've been bringing in. So I'm hoping this will help, uh, bring in more revenue to the city to provide even better patient care, 'cause I believe we have the best equipment, the best paramedics, the best EMS service. So I think this will only strengthen our EMS service for the future, so.
So, Chief.
Could I?
Basically, what you're telling us is that the insurance companies have been getting this money.
Do what now?
Basically, the insurance companies have been getting this money.
Well, what it is, their re- reimbursement rate, so we, we bill the insurance company, uh, that, um, and with our rate, they, they pay what they pay. We billing at five hundred dollars now, uh, whatever the patient's copay is, or they're deductible, but they, they pay. And Michelle will probably, uh, can answer that question on, on that a little bit better, 'cause she deal with that.
I, I got a question. Can y'all, can y'all go to Memphis? 'Cause our fire department, ambulance, can they go to Memphis?
Yes, sir.
But at one time, I didn't think we were going to Memphis.
No, we go, we go to Memphis, 'cause we go to the closest appropriate hospital. So if somebody's had a, uh, say they're having a heart attack, uh, we're gonna take them to Memphis University.
Okay.
If it's a child, we're gonna take them to Labaner. Uh, so we gotta take them to the most closest appropriate facility.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't say that the insurance is getting the money. What it is, is that whatever facility or physician, based on their billing, that's what the insurance carrier has to pay according to their contract. But with us, we basically deal with Medicaid and Medicare, which is for most of the demographics here. So they have a set pay. With Medicaid, they are paid on, based on services rendered, and Medicare is just paid based on mileage and, uh, transportation. It's considered just a set fee. But with this new act that's in place, it does allow us to build a commercial carrier in order to generate more revenue for the city. But with just Medicare and Medicaid, no matter if we bill seventeen hundred dollars, Medicare and Medicaid gonna just pay what they gonna pay. So with the increase of the transport, like I said, it doesn't affect the citizens at all.
It does not.
It does not. Regardless of, you're, you are only responsible for your co-pay or your deductible. Most insurances, if you have a primary and a secondary, your primary will cover that eighty percent, and your secondary will pick up to twenty percent. But if your secondary has a copay, that patient is responsible for their copay after their secondary pays their co-insurance or their deductible.
So Michelle, let me ask you this. Even with the rates, this rate increase and, uh, billing commercial insurance, uh, a lot of times, uh, even with commercial, they will pay, uh, say whether it's in their work, out of their work, they're gonna pay a certain amount, make those adjustments. Of course, you bill it. And the difference, even when the patient has paid a copay and a deductible, the difference is sometimes billed to, uh, the patient, the, or I, I don't know how it is.
We, we can't do that. That, so that's called balance billing, basically. So, so they pay their copay or their deductible, and insurance pays what they pay. We cannot bill for the remainder of the bill, so the patient.
EMT cannot. We come back commercial insurance.
Yeah, that's, that's part of this law too.
With this, yeah, with this is, we talking about commercial insurance. With Medicaid and Medicare, the patient does not receive a bill.
Nah, I know, I know.
But with commercial insurance.
Right, right.
It's if you have, say you got your primary and your secondary, and you pay the copay, but you have not reached that deductible, that's where that, those other charges come in that, that falls on the patient, because he or she hasn't met that deductible. It doesn't impact the co-insurance, and it doesn't impact their copay. But if they have not met their deductible, that's the main thing. Like, our deductible is five thousand dollars.
Right, right.
And if I go to the doctor, I'm gonna get a bill because I haven't met that deductible.
Right, 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 right.
So that's how it works.
I'm just concerned about with this, with this increase, even with a deductible, we're talking about commercial. I'm, but, but here, here's the, here's the thing. If it's not gonna affect, the rates are not gonna affect, per se, the citizens.
It's not. It doesn't impact the citizens at all.
It's fine, it's fine.
It doesn't, it doesn't have an impact on them.
Okay.
Two, two questions. When is this gonna go into effect?
Well, what we have to do, if y'all pass the ordinance, uh, the amendment to the ordinance, we have to, uh, submit this to the, uh, Arkansas Insurance Commission, and also the Arkansas Ambulance Association will do a survey too. We gotta do a survey with them. But talking with them the other day, we can, we're still gonna do the survey, but we can go ahead and submit that. Um, I'm looking, hopefully, we go ahead and submit it. If it's approved, then at least, hopefully, hear something by the first of the year.
Well, I think we just read it out, so you know, it's, it's good to go, I, I would think. But, uh, the other question I had was, uh, how do our rates compare to the private sector?
That's a great question.
That's a great question. Our, our rates are much lower than the private sector. So, but these new recommended rates, um, basically are just for a CDR size, with that data they collected. And it's, it's kinda right there with that three twenty-five percent of that, uh, Medicaid rule rate. So if we didn't have a set fee schedule, we could go ahead and bill that three hundred and twenty-five percent, which would be about sixteen hundred dollars.
That's a scam.
So, uh, I think their rates are, are much higher than ours.
I would think so.
I would think so, 'cause I think they charge for, uh, other fees that we don't, you know. Our number one goal is our citizens, and, and, uh, that's, that's plain and simple. That's our number one goal. So whatever we can do to help them, that don't hurt them, um, is what we wanna do.
And it's important for them to know it, because I'm, I'm certain you all get the same. People thinking it's you all billing. That's a private, uh, service. It's not necessarily us that's billing this amount after the fact. So it's, it's important for the citizens to know that we are, Lord, and it's not us that have the heat there, you know.
Right, right.
Thank you all for taking the time, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hearing in the other discussion. Hearing now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Would you give that ordinance the number, please?
Ordinance number twenty-seven thirteen, two seven one three.
That number's two seven one three. O two, City Attorney?
Uh, O two is an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Independence Combined Cycle Gas Plant Ownership Agreement, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the first time, can I get a motion in a second to suspend the rule?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Independence Combined Cycle Gas Plant Ownership Agreement, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Hearing that read for the second time, can I place it on this final reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's on its third. City Attorney?
This is the third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Independence Combined Cycle Gas Plant Ownership Agreement, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
It was read for the third time. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, in discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you give that ordinance the number, please?
Ordinance number twenty-seven fourteen, two seven one four.
And also, can I get a motion in second to approve paragraph two diversity clause?
So moved.
Paragraph seven.
Paragraph seven.
Second.
Okay, it's paragraph seven. You got a motion in a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Alright. Alright, let's go to, uh, charity days, the giving. Uh, then who want to give their funds?
Are you looking at me, sir?
Yeah, I thought we, someone earlier said they wanna give us funds.
Yeah. So it would be, Willis Monday is wanting to give one thousand seven sixty-six twenty-five to Warner City Board of Angels.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, here we go then, okay, got you. And then Melanie Hutchinson is wanting to give two hundred and eighty fifty-eight to the church.
Okay.
And then we have, uh, Councilor Holt is wanting to give to, uh, one thousand seven ninety-two thirty-four to Missouri Church of God.
Church of Christ.
Alright.
And then, uh, Dr. Bruce is wanting to give one thousand eight hundred thirty fifty-eight to the Warner City Board of Angels.
Well, you all, I heard the request from Councilman Monday, Councilwoman Hutchinson, Councilman Holt, and Councilman Dr. Bruce. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those charities are given. We gonna move down to committee reports, uh, start with the fire department?
Fire department, uh, commission meeting was Tuesday, October the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at two PM. Excuse me. Uh, we have one vacancy on the fire side. We have three vacancies on the EMS side. One firefighter resigned this month. Personal protective equipment in the process of sizing, sizing for twenty twenty-six turnout gear. No ve- new vehicle, no new vehicle maintenance, building maintenance. Decisions are still undetermined regarding the remodeling of Station One. Hoping to have more information by the next fire commission. Training, we have one firefighter in standard class. EMS report EMS calls year-to-date, three thousand one hundred and ninety-one. EMS collections year-to-date, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents. Updates, annual safety day was canceled due to unexpected weather. There is no tentative date of, as of now. Eastern Lane Fire Academy class of twenty twenty-five completed with a one hundred percent passing rate. The new proposed rate increase for ambulance runs, which result, we've already addressed. Finally, the annual lieutenant and captain's test was conducted, conducted on ten twenty twenty-five. End of report.
Alright, we gonna move to airport?
Uh, the airport met at, uh, eight o'clock last Thursday morning, and, um, the discussion, uh, carried on with phase one of the North Apron Rehab Project. It was almost completed, and when I say almost completed, that, they have to go back and replace two concrete panels that didn't come out, uh, to, uh, spec, so they also have to, uh, do the final cleanup. Um, the North Apron Rehab Project, uh, is to pay Garber some additional funding. That additional funding request is due to the scope of the work changing, uh, at the beginning of the project when the FAA made additional funds available. The contract was amended at, uh, that time, and the last item is, uh, the Rebel Services, uh, for the AVGAS rehab project, and, uh, that should be ordered in the tank today, which was last Thursday, uh, to be manufactured, and it's, it's got a delivery lead time of twenty to twenty-five weeks. But it will not interrupt the, uh, service at the airport. That concludes my report.
Alright. Uh, pause. I know, uh, Councilwoman Mohammed.
Right, Director Jones, we, we, uh, met, but we didn't have a quorum. I don't know if there are any insights you'd like to bring to us today? Okay.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I had no appointments. I, I'm gonna do my presentations and my announcements together, first of all. We got it? Okay. Let, let's go back. I think we skipped, uh, permission request, permission for the mayor to sign this standard form agreement between the city of West Memphis and Arco Mary National Holiness Incorporated, and for the project known as the City of West Memphis Recreation and Aquatic Center, and any and all documents related to the project.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. You're welcome. First off, I'm saying, uh, tonight, you know, right outside, we have a chocolate treat. We want, uh, all our kids to be safe, to go and get their candy, family to go out in a safe environment, so we have that as well. Also, I just wanted to report on our boots-on-the-ground cleanup. This was majorly successful, over-successful. I think everyone that came by and got involved, all the council members that was involved, uh, our churches, uh, our inmates, from the women president to the males, all of our students that came, I got those community service hours, and just people within the community that's wanted to get involved, the AARP. I called them the Golden Girls, they was involved, uh, you got so many of our city family members that was involved. I thank all of you all for getting involved. We had, I wanna say in between two fifty to three hundred people told, they have a good, our, uh, sanitation done a great job doing what they doing as well. So I can, I actually rode around our city, I can basically say our city was clean. They worked a lot in war, three, war four, uh,
War five.
War five. So every, every war, we pretty much hit, had a lot of success in it, so I just wanna thank everyone for being involved to make that be where they need to be. Also, I'd want to congratulate the West Memphis Christian Girls. They just won the volleyball championship. City Attorney?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
And then, second, I, I'm being facetious, but I'm asking this question. Do y'all really love our mayor?
Yes, I do.
No, I'm talking about council people.
Oh.
And, and, and the reason, and, and one of the reasons why I'm asking that question is because when I fast, I go to God for leadership, clarity, where I need to be at. And he show me things. He give me directions. I mean, it's ten-day fast and no food for me. If you ain't never done that before? It's, I'm not talking about eat it after eight, or, no, I'm talking about fast and no food. It's been tough because of some things that I've been going through, and I, I want y'all to know this. I wanna listen, but some know it and some don't. Y'all see this letter right here? Y'all mayor has been investigated by the, by the, uh, Arkansas, uh, attorney because of lies that people in the community say, and some was told by some, some council members on this board with me. And that hurt. When I sit here every day and fight like hell for the City of West Memphis, they said that copy of ordinances authorized and incarcerated workers to be working in my private, uh, my personal dwellings. Pictures were sent to men of you all on council. I don't know why it would never sent to me and never asked to me, and I sat right up here with y'all, and no one ever sent nothing to me. I think that was hurtful, and y'all sat right beside me, instead of asking me. I said, uh, invoices on paint, that's supposed to be, that's fire department, but you go right down there right now, all three, five gallon buckets of paint is still down there to this day. You look and say, ordinances are purchasing rules and spending by crazy vehicles, as well as here it is, seven investigation hits on Apex Consulting, as if I was giving someone here some money. Now, let me, let me, let me explain to you all what, what the, 'cause I don't think in history, many of us been on city council for years and years and years. What consulting company can you say that worked for us for four years for free? For free? What? Let me see what it did. During the time assisting Apex has been assisting with virtual, every economic development project, has worked on every economic development project that we are worked on. They were successful in. They were successful in giving us a one million dollar water waste grant here in the City of West Memphis. Did y'all know that? Most of you all knew. A grant, a grant for the summer jobs program, that's how we send our kids and babies back to work, not just for this year, for the next two, three years. They are signed with fifty thousand dollars, they came through Apex along with numerous projects. They do these type of work and business for the business, for the city, the towns and nonprofits around the delta and has for years of experience and a tremendous track record. And many of you all have asked Steve Jones to look into something, into something for you all. But all of a sudden, his company is what been something I'm giving funds to. That hurt like hell. And I can't believe that some of my council people that sit with me right here and have enough balls to say, hey, mayor, let me come to your office and meet you, have a talk. If it was that much concern to, I ain't never seen it done with Bill Johnson, never in my life. Bill Johnson did what he wanted to do and you went and said, work. But this wasn't done to me and I don't like it. I want the same damn respect you give him. I'm, I'm, I'm good, it, it just hurt, but let me say, but let me show you how good God is. Through all this investigation, Tim Griffin them dropped it because the officers with Tim Griffin said, I got good news this morning. You know, weeping, you been weeping for a night, but your joy has come. Read that for me, I want you to read it, but I don't wanna say it's Milan.
Good morning, I've got good news this morning. We've decided to drop the Apex findings since there is a contract in place that sets a quarterly renewal option. We feel this would not violate bidding issues or advance payment issues because of the stipulations of the contract. We've also decided to drop the slingshot issue because of the mayor's explanation in the letter he sent to us Friday. With all of that out of the way, we can now schedule final exit. Would you all be available to meet sometime on Thursday this week? I would also need the police chief and Mrs. Joplin there. They only need to sign one thing. I will send final exit, exit documents, findings, draft, financials, et cetera, once we get something scheduled, thanks.
Who come from? Tell them who it come from.
Julie Conister, CPA, Senior Auditor, Arkansas Legislative Audit, fourteen thirteen Marketplace, we see, Johnsbury, Arkansas.
Thank you. And then my last point, Ms. Torres, stand up. Ms. Torres, stand up.
What's the slingshot issue?
City Treasurer, Sue, you stand up.
And I'm gonna stand up too. First time in West Memphis history, we keep doing it, back to back to back now, zero, zero findings on our material audit.
Go ahead, cause you, it's your floor, everyone, you questioning about money and we doing this, now you, now go ahead.
Well, thank you, um. It, it also hurts my feelings when we have to go through this type of stuff. Um, you all can come and ask me, the mayor, Charlie, any questions you have. I, I promise you, there is nothing going on. Whatever you thought was going on, we've already cleaned that up. For three years in a row, we haven't had any material findings. Now, don't get me wrong, there are things going on that we still have to correct and address, but nothing that is reportable, nothing they're worried about. Honestly, the auditors have been nicer and nicer and nicer and willing to work with us when we do have anything because we provide them with whatever they need. We'll provide y'all with whatever we need. I, I'm busy, right? But if one of y'all called me, I'm gonna call you back. If you, if you come by my office, I'm gonna address you. So it's not, it's not that we're not, especially me, not approachable, it's just that I have a lot going on, still trying to get these systems in place. Now we're in budget season, so you'll be seeing us a lot more. Um, but I, I just don't know what, what people think he is doing, but whatever he does has to come through finance and I'm not gonna let that happen. One, cuz I don't want him to be in trouble, I don't, I don't wanna go to jail, I don't want him to go to jail. So even if, even if he was coming to me something crazy, we gonna talk about it and we gonna, we gonna figure it out and it's not gonna happen. He has never come to me with anything crazy. Luckily, I've never had to deal with that, right? Some people deal with bosses that want what they want and they don't care how you do it. He is not that type of boss, okay? So I just want y'all to know, whatever questions y'all have, whatever the questions the people bring you, please come talk to us. That, that's all I ask, just please come talk to us instead of putting it on Facebook, instead of talking amongst the people because then the rumor turns into a wildfire and now we in California, okay? So, thank you guys for all your support thus far. Um, and once again, when we go through budget season, I will do a taller tutorial. You are able to hop on there at any moment and see who we paying and how much. So, again, thank you guys.
Well, set y'all minds to ease, anytime I got a problem, I always call the mayor and ask him. I ask him face to face.
Yeah.
If anything I want him to, to explain to me what's going on or what need to be done, I call him, don't I call you?
I agree with you one thousand, I, I, I mean, I say answer the whole council, I know y'all are here to answer, I just want.
I ain't gonna talk behind your back, I'm gonna talk to you face to face.
Just come ask me and I promise you, I get the information for you all to, you know, I hear stuff like.
Whatever I got, whatever I feel ain't going right, I'm gonna face you with it.
I, I, you know, I be hearing stuff like, here one man show, how the word here one man show, when we have any event, I always say, I cannot do this without Tracy Cat, James Hope, uh, Dr. Bruce, uh, uh, Melina, uh, Hutchinson, uh, Wayne Crone, Lorraine Mohammed, David Murphy, Ms. Helen Harris, or what is my, I, I'm the only mayor that helped. I have been on council sixteen years, anything that, the little few things that we did, I ain't never heard Mayor Johnson ever call my name. I'm the only one do this. If I'm lying, y'all tell me. I want us to be together, I want us to, hey, if it's something wrong, I wanna better say, hey, Dr. Bruce, let me pull you aside, let me ask you, uh, let me, let me pull you aside, let, let's, let's, let's stop throwing all these crazy things out to our people in the community and they just keep going after me because I love this city just as much as anybody else.
I would, I would like to say something else, just cuz we've never done something, doesn't mean it's wrong. Okay? And just cuz we was doing it, doesn't mean it was right. So I know it's a lot of stuff changing, it's a lot of stuff going on, but everything is in order, our affairs are in order, okay?
I saw, my name's on every check. That's paid.
I, I like to say something, Mayor, uh, basically, uh, I guess being in education and being in administration, generally when, uh, I guess auditors come out, they, they really not trying to beat you up. They're here to help support you or direct you into the right direction. So it's not about, I got you, but it's about trying to help you out and you know I'll help, I'll call you.
And, and you know I agree with you, it's just, it's just the investigation by the Tim Griffin, the state attorney general's office, that is what bothered me. That, when investigators come in, investigators come to my house where I live at, that's what's bothering me.
And we were, we was done with the audit when that happened. So we had to recycle all this information we had already went through with the audit. So it took more of our time, basically, when we was already, you know, finishing doing, but.
Well, my chest is empty, I'm happy, my, my stomach is empty, so, so I'm good, so I'm just glad that God vindicated me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Can I say something? We have an elected city clerk and they have an excellent relationship. I have two new staff members, the mayor, that's the only time I can say he stepped into the clerk's office and put his input in. He's off, he's respectful of his staff, he takes care of us and he has never come in and asked anybody to deviate from a policy. And I respect that about him and people will, will come to me and I just want him to know that we rely on Tori. I trust in Tori, if I have a problem, I'll inundate her, but I trust in who I work for, else I wouldn't be working for you. And he has never walked in that office and told me how to run it, he has never come in there and told us, I want you to do something that he knows is wrong. He's excellent and I thank you for that.
That means a lot.
Yes, it does. I wanna tell y'all something too, it's this mayor position for whoever ever wanted it. The mayor sits at the top, all the department he is is under here and then their staff is under there. But when God go in to bless you, he pulled, he, he running the cup over for the, the mayor is there and it brawls on into his department, he is on down to there, there are men and women. So it don't start under him, it always start with him. Alright, do the councilman, y'all got anything there? Councilwoman Hutchinson?
I, I'm, I'm glad, I got one thing I wanna say, uh, I got the general, you got the general manager out here and I would like to say thank you to the general manager of the West Memphis Utilities Department and his staff because, uh, I've written certain grant, a number of grants for the school district and his staff has been very supportive and, and helping and getting me, uh, some of the information that I've needed. And so I just wanna say thank you, cuz it means a lot.
I also wanna say, I agree with you one thousand, cuz there's two departments he is in here, I think they give me more information probably over the information that I need. And that's GM Bob Ackers and Chief Barry Ely, they, they always giving me information. I mean, it could be something as simple as, uh, where you want me to bag the car in? The car been bagged up, but they called, those two always called me and let me know what direction we going in, so I thank them for that as well. As well as, I, I said back then, look, Ed Royce, hey, we got some things we gonna fix, the car, I know you got a lot on you right now and also I want you to, to keep his wife in your prayers, he been going through a lot. Could I, you want me to say it?
Not in detail, but definitely we need.
Yeah, he, he, yeah, he needs, he needs some prayers, as well as our, Eric Johnson, our, uh, police officer, definitely we need some prayers, so. If y'all ain't got nothing else, uh, hey, I can get out here with it, with, and Tori, don't change clothes.
Second.
Second. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?